I call back.
I order the meeting of April 28, 2010. I'd like to just take one moment to start and to introduce our new school committee members. Kathleen Carroll, who's on this side right now. We're so very happy to, pleased to have Kathleen with us. And on this side of the, oop, on this side of the table, we have Robert Hayes. Robert Hayes is also joining us tonight. So we want to welcome them both. And we're very excited to have new members on the school committee. It's very nice. All right. Our first item is roll call. Mr. Veal is unable to attend tonight, Trish. Everyone else is present. Next will be the approval of items by consensus. Mrs. Benton.
Good evening, everyone. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. The approval of the minutes from April 14 regular session, acceptance of a gift from IBM to the West Intermediate School, and approval of a field trip. That's a special field trip that's through, it's called World Challenge. And I've invited David Sundberg, who is the teacher who has put the request before us this evening. And we have our guest, and that's Dana Arts from World Challenge, who I'd like to invite up to the table to explain. And the reason we have someone here this evening to talk about this field trip is because it's unique. It's not like the field trips that school committee normally approves, which are during the school year. This is a summer exploration. It's an extended stay of roughly four weeks.
Three to four.
Three to four weeks.
Yeah, there's two options.
And what appealed to me about this field trip, David sent me a passionate email saying that he had spent quite a long time considering this and had made up his mind that he wanted to do it. And because of all that it would mean for the students who participated and asked if I would consider bringing it before the school committee. And I was taken by the passion behind the email. And knowing David, I know that he will put 150% behind this project. So I'm going to ask you to turn it over to David and Dana, and they're going to tell you a little bit about it.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for having us. I appreciate it. So I'm just going to give a brief introduction of my passion behind it that Joanne just said. We're going to show you a little, little video of an overview of a bunch of them. And then Dana will answer some questions and give her a little synopsis from World Challenge. As she said, it's something that I've had a passion for. When I first got a job here, I actually looked into a bunch of overseas teaching opportunities, different things like that. And I was actually drawn to state of the community because I do enjoy the community. But I still have a passion to help overseas, to do different things. Not necessarily overseas, but in different cultures. And when they came, they actually presented to the staff, actually in December, I believe it was, at a faculty meeting. And I went up and got some extra information. And I spent a couple, you know, a month or two, and I'm busy, you know, it's in a busy time. I'm coaching basketball at the time. I'm like, this sounds like a lot to take on. And finally, I'm like, you know what? This is a perfect opportunity. I can keep my teaching job and still have an opportunity to teach, to take a group of students from here, Wilmington, and have them experience another culture in South America. I'm leaning towards Peru. She explained to me there are actually a couple of cheaper opportunities in South America, actually just today, which I was unaware of. So that's the other, that's the other part. Really, my passion is to go somewhere and take these kids outside of this community and put them into a community where they can do, do community service in the community, but also have a chance to build leadership skills. She'll explain to you. But the kids actually take the leadership role in this, in this activity. They, they do their own fundraising, they do a bunch of different things. And then they, they decide what we're going to do to help the, you know, the South American country that we go to, we go to do. And they also decide our basic routine for the day. So it's kind of a neat opportunity for me, a passion with kids and a passion for overseas. And it's two, really two birds with one stone, not to be cliche. But it's, it's something I'm really excited about, and hopefully it'll be, you know, it'll, it'll get approved, whatever. But I'm willing to work, willing to answer questions. And we're just going to show you a little video about the, about the company that World Challenge and some of the places they've gone. All right?
Before we start the video, I just want to introduce myself. So I'm Dana Arts. I'm the program manager for World Challenge. So I work with students and teachers and parents at all the schools that we work with in North America. World Challenge, just to give you a bit of perspective on us as an organization, we have existed for almost 25 years. I think it's 23 now. Originally, we were started in the UK. We now have offices in Britain, in Australia, in Dubai, and also in Boston. And the Boston office opened about 10 years ago. And currently, we work with almost 40 schools in the Northeast. And everybody, we've kind of passed out of one of our brochures that describes a little bit about our program. And it includes a client list of all the schools that we work with, or a selection
I think Austin's recommendation of another teacher at our school, who had taken two groups
of the schools that we work with. And you'll see some of your neighboring school districts have traveled with us, you know,
of students on expedition, one year to South Africa and one year to Thailand.
every two years for the last eight years because we work on a, on a two-year expedition
And he was just raving about the program itself.
cycle. Because students sign up, they might, you know, at Wilmington, they might sign up, you
So that was definitely a big part of why I went with World Challenge.
know, sometime before the summer of this school year.
As an educator, this is the biggest lesson and experience that you can give students.
And then they'd spend over a year planning and preparing for their expedition, fundraising for their expedition, before they actually depart. So the DVD that we're going to show is kind of interviews with previous teachers who
So as someone who is in the business of educating and wanting to watch students grow, this
have been involved in the program, some interviews with challengers.
is the biggest progress you will see.
And it kind of shows you what a World Challenge expedition is all about.
I just wanted to have an adventure, have a chance to have a different kind of tour
Okay. Hopefully, no technical difficulties here. We're going to go to the video.
because it's not like anything else.
Yep, you got it.
Instead of going to see the Taj Mahal and then see some other normal site, we went off the beaten path. And we saw like a village, and we spent time there. And we really got to know the place in a different way than most people would. I was amazed by how much the students did. They just jumped right in, you know? They were able to plan the travel and the accommodations and figure out the food and the budget. I mean, they literally did everything.
The first, the first impression I had when we landed in country could only be described as culture shock. Such an overused term, but there's really no other word than shock to describe what it is. You know, you get off a plane, and the plane still feels like, still feels like something you're comfortable with. We landed at night, stepped out onto a busy street to get in our, in our transportation. And you just noticed immediately that, that things were different and that this was not the culture we had come from, and this was not the culture we were used to.
The leading from behind element of the expedition was, for me, a tough adjustment. It was hard to sit back and say, like, okay, we're going to mess up. We're not going to be there on time. Things might go poorly. It was hard to initially step back and say that that was okay.
Everyone was, was leader for, for one day on the trip. And, you know, we had 14 people, so everyone ended up going twice. And we would also have, you know, various other officer positions. And then we had a couple positions that didn't change over the course of the trip.
Once we landed in country, my first impression was that the kids would get a lot out of the experience. You know, immediately, we took a taxi ride to the hostel we were staying in that night. And the kids were just blue against the window, looking at the city of Lima as we drove through. And, you know, it wasn't America, and that was apparent right off the bat. The trek, I think, was the time, from what I saw and then from what I heard from the team after the fact, was the time when everyone really had a chance to kind of come together as a group. You saw kids really start to show their strengths, both physical strengths as well as the emotional endurance necessary to accomplish these tasks. The trek was an opportunity for them to, to work through the challenges and to really grow as travelers and as truckers and as individuals.
We were working at a little school where the kids come for two weeks, and then they go back to their homes for two weeks, and they come for two weeks. And we ended up building and helping to, to plaster and paint a new classroom for them. And it was, it was really enjoyable to, to interact with the kids while we were there.
In Argentina, this was the last time. We went to Aguazu Falls, which was awesome. The kids loved it. And I wouldn't have wanted them to leave Argentina without that opportunity. Being in the jungle, being in the woods for a month is awesome, and you're learning a lot of ice skills. But there's something to be said for traveling 1,000 miles away from home and, and not going to some of the touristy spots. So I'm really glad that they do give the kids a chance to do that.
One of the things that I really liked about World Challenge was that they were very upfront in terms of all of the safety things. They did an excellent job of describing the back office operations that they have in the UK in, in terms of how they check out the itineraries. The in-country agents that they talked about gave me a lot of comfort. Also, in terms of the fact that they had the PERF devices and the phones such that, you know, however there was an emergency, whether it's on the expedition with the team itself or, you know, in country, if there, if there happened to be some unrest or something like that, that I had complete confidence that the support was there to ensure the safety of my son.
The majority of our meeting time in the two-year buildup is really brainstorming fundraising opportunities and, which are also, you know, team bonding opportunities. And then the students can do, you know, fundraising or work a job on their own as well.
Matthew, between his own work and the fundraising that his group did, funded the entire trip himself.
You have to do it 100%, 150%. Absolutely do it. I think the end result has been just tremendously positive for me, for the students who went and really for the school in a lot of ways because they brought back a fresh crop of really trained leaders.
Just to let you know, the teachers that were speaking in the DVD, those are teachers from Acton, Boxborough, from Nittmuck, and from Needham High Schools, which are kind of all regional high schools that you may have heard of. The, so I'll talk briefly just about the outline of World Challenge expedition because it is very different than other school field trips. I'll also talk about safety and kind of a school's, any role or obligation that a school would have in terms of how these field trips run or this expedition would run. And then I'll, of course, talk about the fundraising piece. And I realize you have a big agenda tonight, so I'll try to go quickly. If you have questions, just jump in along the way. So these expeditions are really not like a normal school trip, in part because they run during the summer. They run for much longer than normal field trips. And they're basically student-run. So from when, when a team is launched, that's kind of a series of, there's a series to launching a team generally, there's a student assembly in which this is presented as an opportunity for freshmen, sometimes eighth grade, but normally freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. So they would travel either as rising sophomores, rising juniors, or just graduated seniors. From the point when they kind of sign up, they, they will then start working as a team to research their destination. David will have chosen the destination in advance. And we're, we're thinking about South American destinations, maybe Peru, maybe Ecuador, for three or four weeks. So he'll have set that in advance. The students, as a group, will start to research their destination. And then they'll plan their itinerary. And I'll come back, or someone from World Challenge will come back and help them kind of map it out so it's logistically feasible and safe. But they plan their itinerary almost a year before they travel. And then during the intervening year between when they plan it and when they travel, World Challenge will risk assess it. So we have an itinerary planning manager for every destination. We travel to over 45 destinations around the world. And in-country agents who live in all of these countries who will kind of go on this trek, go to this national park, go on to this community service area and vet this, vet this activity so that it's safe and fun and appropriate for a team of 10 or 12 or 15 students. So students will be planning their itinerary. They'll also be fundraising as a group, car washes, bake sales, which honestly does not contribute an enormous amount to the cost of the expedition. But we really work with them quite, quite closely at the beginning, when they sign up, to set realistic personal earning targets. So say, if you babysit two nights a week, or if you get a summer job as, as a camp counselor or work bagging groceries during the summer, how much can you, over the next 14 months, earn and then not spend, earn and save to put towards this expedition? And so the expedition isn't, isn't, you know, necessarily realistic for every student because some students don't, don't want to make that commitment or, or have other obligations in terms of sports. But for a student who is, who is excited about this opportunity and says, this is what I'm focusing on as my extracurricular activity for the next 14 months, it's well within reach. And we've seen that happen. You know, students earn the entire cost of an expedition or, or students, you know, don't, don't earn any of it. But for students who need to earn and prioritize it, it is possible. And we kind of give them a toolkit at the beginning to do that. Next fall, students would be, would come with David on a three-day camping trip in the Berkshires, so a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday as a team. And we, we go over kind of safety skills, camping skills with them, and, and kind of team-building activities so that they have all of the, the skills and kind of fitness as a group and as individuals to really have a successful expedition when, when they're abroad. And then when they're abroad, they will spend time trekking, doing some adventure trekking. So four to 10 days in the Andes or the Amazon, depending on where they go and what they decide they want to do. They'll be accompanied by local guides, learning about the traditions, the landscapes of the people who live there. They'll do a community service project, again, whatever they choose to do. So it can be environmental conservation, it can be teaching English, it can be building a playground, or some combination of, you know, whatever their interests are. We, we work to kind of match them with an appropriate community in need. And then they have some time for R and R. So doing, if they go to Peru, they'll see Machu Picchu. If they go to Ecuador, they, they, they go whitewater rafting in the Amazon. So throughout their expedition, they're accompanied by a teacher and an expedition leader from World Challenge. This is someone we've trained and vetted. They have years of experience in the, the student travel industry. They have experienced traveling and developing world countries. These expedition leaders, while they're abroad, are supported by satellite technology, phones and positioning beacons. They have on-call doctors that they can consult with. We staff an operations room that's on-call for teams 24 hours a day while they're abroad. So a team will check in with the ops room every day. If a team goes over budget and they need more money, the ops room wires them more money. If a team has a medical emergency and needs a helicopter evacuation, the ops room can coordinate that too. The ops room maintains diplomatic relationships with all the embassies. Every itinerary, every student is registered with the embassy in their country. And we contract with a remote medical service that, the company's name is called First Assist. This is the kind of company that supports expeditions up Everest, a National Geographic Survey Team. So between the ops room and the embassy contacts and First Assist, the, the medical knowledge and kind of tools are, are available for teams whenever they need them. And, and teams are, every student, when they travel, is fully insured. So that means that, or maybe an example is the best way to show that. A few years ago, five years ago, a student was climbing Mount Kilimanjaro. He had appendicitis. The helicopter was, was called. So within eight hours of the satellite phone call being made to the ops room, the, the boy was picked up off the side of the mountain, was flown to Nairobi, which is the kind of, the Western standard medical hub in Western Africa, in Eastern Africa. His mother was flown from Boston to Nairobi to be with him for three days, and then they were both flown back to the States together for him to finish his recuperation. And all of that was included in the insurance plan. Every student is insured for about $8 million while they're abroad. So money is never an issue in terms of getting a student kind of, or a team, any assistance that they need while they're abroad. And I think our, our reputation as an organization, we've, we work with worldwide over 850 schools a year. Lifetime, over 50,000 students have traveled with us. You know, there is risk in going abroad, especially to these types of destinations. But that's a risk that we work before they travel in terms of risk assessing itineraries and while they're abroad in terms of making sure that they have a toolkit of resources to support them as best as possible while they're abroad. You know, our, our safety record is, is kind of, sets the standard in, in the field of expeditionary travel for, for students. In terms of funding these expeditions, they're not cheap. Satellite phones and on-call helicopters, you know, you hope you don't use them, but when you do, they're very expensive. That said, you know, because teams have over a year to budget and plan for them, I, I do say, you know, confidently, I work, I'm the program manager, so I work with students, helping them set their fundraising targets. It can happen. For the expeditions that we're thinking about for Wilmington, a three- or four-week expedition to either southern Peru or Ecuador, the price range is from about $4,200 to $5,800. Peru being more expensive, Ecuador being less expensive. The price is basically all-inclusive. It includes the flights, it includes the insurance, it includes the training that they get before they travel. It includes their expedition leader, all of their food, in-country costs, their community service budget. It doesn't include their personal gear, any, they, they won't need travel visas. It doesn't include their personal, their personal gear, their passports, their immunizations, and personal spending money for souvenirs. Or if a team elects to do something outside of their arranged itinerary, so if they decide to do a whitewater rafting trip, that would come out of their personal spending money, which would be in Ecuador about $30. And we cap personal spending money for every student so that everybody's operating from an even playing field in terms of what they want to spend it on. So personal spending money for either of those destinations for three or four weeks would be no more than $350 for four weeks. For $350 for four weeks in Peru, $200 for three weeks in Ecuador. So that would, that's kind of the range. And I know that you have other things to talk about, so I've kind of breezed through some points. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Or if, if you need to think about it, you can email me later. Yeah.
Couple of questions. So you have, because I noticed it said 21 to 28 days. You definitely said 28 days. Is that?
Well, that's what, I mean, that's what, I mean, I looked at the numbers and I, at first, I just said, you know, I, I looked at, I mean, you look at the map and they go a million places. And I was like, what are, what are going to be my challenges here at Wilmington? And my big concern was the cost of the students. And so I said, you know, I ruled, I ruled out Africa, India, you know what I mean? All those different things. I said, let's stay here. And then I was like, well, you know, Costa Rica is more affordable, but we already go to Costa Rica. There's already a trip that goes to Costa Rica. And I'm like, I want it to be something different, something that appeals, but also affordable. So I was like, oh, somewhere in South America. And I was like, oh, Peru, you know, perfect. Like, I'll go see Machu Picchu. That'd be awesome. And then when she just showed up, I didn't realize that Ecuador was actually about $1,000 cheaper. And I looked at the numbers, and for three to four weeks, it's only like a $2, $300 difference. It's really just the, the destination that's important. So those types of things. I don't know exactly when that has to be nailed down, but it's summer anyway. Like, I, I'd be up for four weeks if I could get more interest from kids for three weeks and I could get, if I could fill a team for three weeks. I'm very flexible in that, in that sort of thing, is what, whatever's going to work.
And then if, if I, number of students on, on your approval form, you wrote 12 to 17, it's freshman and, I believe it said freshman and sophomores. If you don't get that minimum, will you open it up to other classes? How does that work?
Absolutely. I mean, she, she said in her thing too, that we can take juniors. I mean, ideally, you'd fill it with a freshman, some, the, the juniors will be, it'll be the summer after they graduate. So they're going to, you know what I mean? I don't know that that would include a lot of different people. More, I would think, to include it to the upcoming eighth graders because it would be the summer after their freshman.
Yeah. A lot of schools will offer it to current freshmen and sophomores, and then the following fall will open it up to freshmen who have just entered the school so they can join just before they go on their weekend camping trip. And generally, there is, there's a bit of reception from kind of incoming freshmen that way.
So, I mean, it, once again, that's another thing that just kind of, what, we have to look at. I don't know exactly, you know what I mean? Right now, ideally, it's freshman, sophomore, we get it filled, we're all set. If there's extras that want to go, then we have to look into getting another teacher that's interested and, you know, I think that's how that works. So, and actually, since I've been talking about, like, seven teachers, I'm like, oh, I'll go, I'll go. You know what I mean? They're like, let's do it. And I'm like, well, we need to get, you know, we need to get the numbers and different things of that.
So it's never a problem having too many students, but similarly, it's never a problem having too few. If there are only three students from Wilmington who want to travel, well, then Dave's spot to travel with them wouldn't, wouldn't be covered. But we do still guarantee that those students who want an expedition get one. And so we can link them, and we do this every summer. So, you know, if, if you're going to Peru, then Franklin High School, which is a South Shore high school, has eight students currently signed up for Peru. So four Wilmington students could travel with eight Franklin students. And then, you know, Dave and the Franklin teacher would have to figure out who wanted to travel. And then they would travel, you know, as a composite team with an expedition leader for a World Challenge.
So that's...
Mr. Higginson?
I have a couple of questions. One, I know you keep saying Peru and Ecuador. When will you nail down the final destination? Because I don't want you to come back and say, we're going to go to Venezuela. So, you know, I mean, it's a serious, it's a...
Honestly, I, I had nailed down Peru until literally 10 minutes before this, and she said Ecuador is like $1,200 cheaper. So I mean, ideally, whatever it is, it's like $1,000, $1,200 cheaper. So I, my thing coming in here, I said on the thing was Peru, I was coming. And then I was like, well, honestly, I just want to fill the spot. So when she said that, I, I mean, Ecuador is equally of interest, the only, you know what I mean? So it would be one of those two locations.
Can I just say, procedure-wise, what we could do is, we could vote on this tonight with the caveat that should it change, you need to come back and get us, and we'll vote on the other place that you're going instead.
Absolutely.
So we'll vote on what we have before us. But knowing that if you change from Peru to something else, you'll come back.
Absolutely. Sounds good.
That's what we do it. Mr. Higgins?
Yeah, I mean, it's not...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I had a couple more questions. Also, you mentioned that there's another trip going to the Berkshires this fall, which is not listed here. So obviously, we'd have to add that, that we'd approve that as well.
Right. Yeah.
Expedition trip.
Yeah. I'll do that. That was, that was my mistake. That was my mistake. I'll add that, and I'll come.
Okay. Yeah, I know, we could, yeah, yeah. Okay. And the, the other question I said, I have is that you mentioned that if the expedition runs out of money, that you're going to wire them additional money if, if they overspend their budget. How does that affect the kids on the trip? And do they have to pay? Or is that something that the program will pay if, if they blow all their budget? How's that happen?
So their expedition budget is provided by World Challenge. So they pay their expedition tuition, which includes the cost of, you know, their Berkshires trip and their airfare and all of their in-country costs. And then we provide them, because, you know, student leadership is a big part of this expedition, so they, they rotate through different leadership roles while they're abroad. So the teacher and the expedition leader kind of lead from behind. There's a student leader, an assistant leader, a navigator, somebody in charge of transportation and food and accommodation, and a comptroller or the, the team accountant. And so they, they are responsible for their entire expedition budget. And they decide how much to spend each day. And we give them a guideline. We're like, well, if you spend this much every day, you'll end up on track. But they don't always. And the expedition leader and the teacher, especially if you have a math teacher, are great to kind of help guide them through that budgeting process and the, the learning and the making mistakes and going over budget and then making up for it later. But sometimes there will be changes in exchange rates, or sometimes the guide fee that we will have pre-negotiated with our guides will change dramatically. So an example, actually, two years ago in Peru, when they're hiking at high altitudes in Peru, they have mules to carry their packs during their trek. But there had been a drought a month before the team arrived, so the mules hadn't really had that much food, so they couldn't support the weight of two packs. So you needed to have twice as many mules as we had originally accounted for when we had designed the budget for the team so that each mule had one pack instead of two. And so the team had to pay for that. And then they called the ops room after their trek and said, we just paid double for our mules for our trek. That wasn't provided in our team budget. The ops room is also equipped as a Western Union facility, so they wired money to cover that discrepancy. And the kids didn't have to pay anything extra.
All right. So it's not like if they completely blow all their budgets at the end, you don't call up the parents each and say, everybody has to kick an extra $2,000, we're leaving your kid. No.
expedition, so they, they rotate through different leadership roles while they're abroad. So, the teacher and the expedition leader kind of lead from behind, there's a student leader, an assistant leader, a navigator, somebody in charge of transportation, and food, and accommodation, and a comptroller, or the, the team accountant. And so, they, they are responsible for their entire expedition budget, and they decide how much to spend each day. And we give them a guideline. We're like, well, if you spend this much every day, you'll end up on track. But they don't always. And the expedition leader and the teacher, especially if you have a math teacher, are, are great to kind of help guide them through that budgeting process, and the, the learning, and the making mistakes, and going over budget, and then making up for it later. But sometimes, um, there will be changes in exchange rates, or sometimes, the guide fee that we will have pre-negotiated with our guides will change dramatically. So, an example, actually, two years ago in Peru, um, when they're hiking at high altitudes in Peru, they have mules to carry their packs during their trek. But there had been a drought a month before the team arrived, so the mules hadn't really had that much food, so they couldn't support the weight of two packs. So, you needed to have twice as many mules as we had originally accounted for when we had designed the budget for the team, um, so that each mule had one pack instead of two. And so, the team had to pay for that. And then, they called the ops room after their trek and said, we just paid double for our mules for our trek, that wasn't provided in our team budget. The ops room is also equipped as a Western Union facility, so they wired money to cover that discrepancy. And the kids didn't have to pay anything extra.
All right, so it's not like if they completely blow all their budgets at the end, you don't call up the parents each and say, everybody has to kick an extra two-thousand dollars, we're leaving your kids.
No.
Now, I'm, it's, you know, it's...
That's why, I mean, in the, I mean, we hire our expedition leaders to keep the team safe, to keep the team happy, but also to keep the team on budget. So, it, it's, it's our responsibility through our expedition leader to make sure they stay on budget, and if they don't, that's also our mistake, the expedition leader's mistake, and we cover it.
I'm assuming that's in a guarantee somewhere, when these kids sign up and all of that stuff, that there's a tuition that covers all expenses, and anything over budget, World Team picks up, whatever?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And my other question is, you mentioned there's eight-million-dollar insurance per child. I'm assuming that's for bodily injury, or death, or anything else that happens, or so forth?
That's a medical, a comprehensive medical insurance, so bodily injury and, and death. Um, the, it's, it's a, our insurance coverage is in pounds, it's taken care of by our UK office, so it's five-million pounds, which fluctuating exchange rate is around eight-million dollars these days.
Mm, okay.
We don't plan on...
No, 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 no. The reason why I say that, no, the reason why I say that, because she mixed the two. When she said she was going over budget, then she said she had eight-million-dollar insurance policy to cover things. I was saying, you mixed the two statements, so I just want to be sure that eight million is just for medical insurance and all that, and that the other budget is covered by World Team. So, in case you guys go over budget, the company pays for it.
That's, yeah.
It's not back onto the kids, so.
Right, right, no, it's not.
Thank you for clarifying, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's, again, I just want to be sure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Did you...
It just, it does seem like there's going to be a lot of changes to what is presented tonight. Um, I, I have no problem with the program. I think it's fantastic. The, the more you can get the kids out, traveling the world, the better. That's absolutely, I think it's a fantastic program. But just procedurally...
Do you feel more comfortable with us waiting?
Should we need, I mean, should we narrow it down a little bit before we do take a, take a vote on it?
What's your concern, the location?
Um, not, not so much the location, it's just, I mean, we're, we're kind of okay in Peru, five-thousand dollars, summer around June to summer around July of next year, and it's, it's really nothing definitive. And I, I just didn't, I guess I'm really not sure on how procedurally it is for us. I don't know if we need something more specific than that. I mean, I, you definitely have my support, I'll just tell you right, you definitely have my support for this trip, hands down, absolutely. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for the kids. But just, I don't, liability-wise, does the school committee have to cover itself more?
This is a summer, so you don't have any liability. This is a summer trip. My recommendation is we vote on Peru. If it changes to Ecuador, they come back and...
Just, I mean, the only, I know, my only, my only concern with putting it off would be, like...
He has to do it, man.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff that we want to get into motion, like, there's a couple assemblies and different things like that. Whereas, like, right now, it's set at Purdue, Peru, Purdue, it's a college, we're not going to college. Um, Peru, you know, around five-thousand, whatever it is.
Sure.
You know what I mean? And then, it, there were, there are actual dates. I actually talked with, there's another guy I've been in contact with, and there's actual dates that you can leave. And it's, it was like, June twenty-third of next year, and like, July sixth, and I would just have to decide between one of those two. And those were things I didn't want to nail down, because I wanted to see, you know what I mean, student involvement. But I feel comfortable, I mean, if you would like a printout of that, I mean, I can give you those exact dates, but I didn't know that procedurally, I, I was unaware of that.
Yeah, and, and again, like, my, I really not exactly sure procedurally how we can do it, but I, again, I have no, no problem supporting this tonight, and then when the, when the final decisions are made, as soon as they're made, if you could just bring it back, just so we can have that as well, I'd be okay with that.
You can put that in the motion, we can pull this up.
Okay, I can bring back a more permanent mo, but just so that we can get it...
You don't have to make it, you know, you don't have to make every decision tomorrow either, that's why I'm not looking forward at the next meeting.
No, no, I got, yeah.
It's just, you know, go, go through the process, take your time, make sure it's the right trip for you and for the students.
Right.
And, and then when it's figured out, to, to bring it back, and...
Okay.
But just to let you know, in terms of departure dates, when, once Dave finally, you know, finalizes which destination, which duration, three or four weeks that he wants, um, he will kind of allocate him a departure window. So, it will be a, a seven-day departure window, and then when students or parents sign up, they'll be told, okay, your expedition will last twenty-one days or twenty-eight days in country. So, a twenty-day expedition includes three days of travel, so in total, it becomes a thirty-one-day expedition. And they'll depart sometime within this six-day, this six-day window. One other thing I didn't mention is that when students sign up for this expedition, they sign up with World Challenge. So, um, we work at a lot of schools without having school board approval. We work at a lot of schools with having school board approval as well. Some schools ask students to sign permission slips in addition to their agreement forms with World Challenge, some schools don't. In terms of liability for the school, um, we have a liability coverage that covers every teacher, board member, administrator, everyone connected to a school, to the school. And so, if, some school boards kind of wash their hands of it, and some school boards are, ask for, you know, parent permission slips every step along the way, and in terms of your liability, it, it isn't affected one way or the other.
Mr. Marchese?
Yeah, just a quick question, just to follow up to Mrs. Benton's comment. Since we don't have any liability, and that it is a summer trip, then, my only question is then, why would we actually vote, why would we need to vote on it? If, I'm, I'm just following with your logic, that if we don't have any liability, it is a summer trip, and she just stated that they can just sign up with World Challenge, why would we necessarily need to approve it? So, if we didn't approve it, could they still do the trip?
They could still do the trip. I'm looking for the school committee approval, because I think it's, I, one of the areas that you're going to see in the next strategic plan for Wilmington is we need to broaden our students' horizons even more, and, and, and let them become global students of the world, and so, this is my first attempt at doing that officially.
If you're looking for an endorsement, Mrs. Benton, then absolutely. If, if that's the purpose of the vote for an endorsement, then absolutely, then I would agree. I think it's, it's a great trip. I just want to clarify, you know, what the vote is for, because like you said, we don't have any liability, and I just want to be kind of clear, you know, on what, what we're really doing.
I think also because we have a teacher involved, if they went out and, and signed up on their own in World, the, the World...
World Challenge.
Challenge, sorry, um, organization, it has nothing to do with us at all. But where we're having teachers involved, I think that adds legitimacy to their, to their trip. I think it's important that we just, we do that. What, what we'll do is, we'll take this one out of the consents agenda, we'll just vote on two things on the consent agenda, then we'll add a little motion to this that...
Separate.
A separate, we'll just have a separate vote, and say that, um, we, um, when you make your final determination, you'll just come back and...
They'll come back, yeah.
Yeah. You can just give it to me, I'll present it. Yeah, just present, yeah.
All right, yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments on this? That was, you, it was such a thorough presentation, it's...
All right.
Thank you very much, it was excellent.
No, it is, that's what they do.
Okay. So, um, we appreciate you taking your time and coming, and we'll just do this...
We appreciate, sorry, taking up so many, two times.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
I want to see how many of us sign up to go.
Yeah.
That sounds great. So, I'll take a, a motion for the approval of the minutes, April fourteenth, two thousand and ten, regular session, and an acceptance of the gift from IBM to the West Intermediate School.
You can make my recommendation, you can have to do them each individually, because the two new school community members cannot vote on the minutes, because they were not...
The minutes, that's right, you're right.
Part of the...
Thank you, I forgot. Um, okay, we'll just start the first one. Approval of minutes, April fourteenth, two thousand and ten, regular session. Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve the minutes of April fourteenth, two thousand and ten, regular session.
Do we have a second? Good, Mr. Marchese. All those in favor?
All right.
All those abstain?
Obstain.
Two abstain. Thank you. Okay, the next one. Now, we can, everyone can vote on these two. Acceptance of the gift from IBM to the West Intermediate School. Mr. Marchese.
I make a motion that we accept the gift from IBM to the West Intermediate School in the value of one-thousand dollars.
And do we have a second? Mr. Higgins? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Trish. And the third one, the approval of the field trip to Peru by Wilmington, through Wilmington High School, and with the caveat that when it gets, when all the details are finalized, they will be brought back to the school committee. Is that good? Okay, do we have a, go ahead, Mr. Marchese.
Make a motion that we approve the field trip to Peru through Wilmington High School, with the caveat that once final destination is determined, that they come back for final approval.
And do we have a second?
I'll do it.
Mr. Hayes? Okay. All those in favor? Very good, unanimous, Trish. Congratulations. Okay.
Good luck, very much.
Good luck. Yeah, thank you so much. Dana, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you for having us.
I just have one question for you guys. Do you, I mean, from, from your guys' event, point, would you guys recommend Ecuador or Peru based on this?
Oh, geez.
No, no, based on, like, your approval, based on the thousand dollars, you think we'll make either one? All right, we're all set.
Whatever the kids want.
I would say just lots of pictures, that's it. That's part of the deal, you have to bring back the pictures, man.
Well, you're happy.
Thank you.
Yes, bye-bye. Good night, thank you. Wow, okay. Um, oh, our next item of business is reorganization. According to our bylaws, I had a question on this from someone, and checked out the bylaws, I mean, excuse me, the policy, and for the purpose of organizing, the school committee at its first regular meeting following the district's annual elections, will elect from its membership a chairperson, a vice-chairperson, and a secretary, all of whom will hold their respective offices for a term of one year, or until a successor is elected. It's never actually happened that we've had a meeting before town meeting, but now that they've changed the town meeting date, it turns out that it's after our second meeting, so from now on, we, there'd be a reorganization apparently every year before town meeting. In the past, it was always after town meeting. So, um, some, a previous person thought that we needed to do it after town meeting, and that's what the policy stated, but that's not what it states. So, that's why we'll do this tonight. And, um, I gave you a copy so that the new people could follow this. Each officer is elected one at a time, the superintendent will oversee the vote for the chairman, the new chairman will proceed with votes for vice chairman and secretary. The vote will go alphabetically for two rounds. Round one is nomination, round two is the actual vote. So, what you do, if you wish to nominate someone, you give the name, if not, you say pass. If someone is nominated, and you're fine with that person, you still say pass. So, so the first time, you can give a name, the second time, round two, you say the name of the person, place the nomination, if you vote to, if you want to vote that way. If not, um, you say pass, again, okay? And so, the person with the most votes will become the new officer. Okay? So, I'm going to entertain nominations for the chair of the school committee, and I'm going to go with an alphabetical order, Mrs. Carroll.
Pass.
Mr. Hayes?
Pass.
Mr. Higgins?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Kane.
Mrs. Kane?
Pass.
Mr. Marchese?
I will second that nomination.
Dr. Quick?
Third. Mrs. Kane.
Okay, now we're going to vote. We have one, name one ballot, Mrs. Kane. Mrs. Carroll?
Pass.
Do you want to vote for Mrs. Kane?
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Kane, just say her name.
Mrs. Kane.
Okay. Mr. Hayes?
I gladly vote for Mrs. Kane.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
Mrs. Kane.
Mrs. Kane?
Mrs. Kane.
Mr. Marchese?
Mrs. Kane.
Dr. Quick?
Mrs. Kane.
Thank you, everybody.
The unanimously appointed chair of the school committee. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, now we'll do, um, vice chairman. Oh, and I'll tell you afterwards, well, I'll just stay in our seats for now, but then afterwards, um, we'll, we'll move around, move around. Okay, Mrs. Carroll.
Pass.
Okay, Mr. Hayes?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Higgins as vice chair.
Okay, Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Marchese?
I will second that nomination for Mr. Higgins as vice chair.
Okay, and Dr. Quick?
Mr. Higgins.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll say our names.
Mrs. Carroll?
Higgins.
Okay, um, Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Higgins?
Mr. Higgins?
Mr. Higgins.
You're saying that with enthusiasm? Yeah, I heard that. I heard that. Mr. Marchese?
Mr. Higgins.
Okay, Dr. Quick?
Mr. Higgins.
And Mrs. Kane, Mr. Higgins. Congratulations, Mr. Higgins. Since the last time you were here, I've learned to keep my hand down, so I'm not sure what you'll be doing that.
I don't know what to do. I started to go up a couple times.
Okay, and our last officer, but not least, is secretary. Mrs. Carroll?
Pass.
Mr. Hayes?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Quick as secretary.
Okay, Mr. Higgins?
Pass.
Mr. Marchese?
I will second the nomination for Dr. Quick.
Thank you, Dr. Quick?
Pass.
And Mrs., Mrs. Vale. Oh, not Mrs. Vale. Mr. Vale's voting wherever he is. Mrs. Kane, pass. Okay, um, now we go for the name.
Mrs. Kane.
Okay, Mr. Hayes?
Dr. Quick.
Mr. Higgins?
Dr. Quick.
Mr. Marchese?
Dr. Quick.
Dr. Quick.
Dr. Quick. Oh, Dr., wow.[1448.13]
Thank you.
I thought you were saying Dr.
And Mrs. Kane. Dr. Quick. Congratulations, Dr. Quick.
Thank you.
Very pleased to have you. At least we're all in good moods. Okay, I came up with two ideas while I was sitting here. One is, we're going to, if we do, because H is going here, if we do, we start this way, and Mrs. Carroll, you come and sit beside Mr. Hayes, who will move over one. You move over one. And then it'd be Mr. Higgins, Mr. Marchese, Dr. Quick, and Mr. Vale. Okay.
Are you switching sides?
I'm switching sides. And then I came up with something second.
Uh-oh.
We'll take turns rotating every other meeting who starts on board members' questions and comments. I should have thought of that last time.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Wouldn't that be good, then? You can start and have something to say.
I always have nothing to say.
Exactly.
You always got out like, I don't have to say anything. I already said it. I hear on the house.
I have nothing to say.
Excellent. So, thank you for rearranging yourselves.
It's been ordered.
Yes, you should take that with you right now. Mrs. Carroll, who can take that one?
Oh.
All right.
Say VP on that.
Oh, we should get one of those. I couldn't. All right. Excellent, thank you very much. I like to get used to, where is everybody? Okay, our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
Just two informational items in the report this evening. There's a memo here from the Attorney General's office regarding the open meeting law and changes in the law. I know that later on in the year, we're going to have someone from MASC do a workshop on for the school committee members, but this has to do with the posting of meetings, which we now do down at the town hall. So if you want to have input into where they should be posted, you can contact the Attorney General. Second item is, along with, hoping to be involved with the feasibility studies, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, under the law, has to do an inventory of all Massachusetts schools. They are going to complete it within the next three months and visit over 7,000 school, nearly 1,850 public elementary, middle, and high schools. They will be coming to visit the schools, spending about three hours averaging each of the schools, and we have to fill out questionnaires ahead of time on, you know, history, programs, class layouts, floor plans.
Wow.
It's a school need survey. The purpose of this survey will help them in conducting the tours. This is not a choice, this is something we must participate in. So I thought I'd let you know about that.
And do they let us know ahead of time, quite a bit ahead of time when they're coming?
No, we'll know the week before.
Oh, the week before.
I went to, I participated in a webinar, and I included the handout because I actually, the beginning part of it, which is the history of MSBA, is, I found informative and thought the school committee might enjoy reading. So just wanted to let you know that's going to be happening in the schools sometime between now and June 16.
Mrs. Benton.
Mr. Marchese.
Do you have enough information at least to get started, so you're not blasted with it a week before?
We actually are using our master study, thank goodness we have a master plan, because most of the information is in that.
Excellent.
Actually going to give it to them.
Okay. Our next item of business is all business, anti-bullying policy.
For those who did not print out the new one that I sent in the mail, and had off the press this evening, the, we were alerted that the Legislative Conference Committee has released their final report on bullying bill, and it will be acted on in a session tomorrow. So I printed it out for all of you.
Yeah, thank you.
The front page is a, actually, summary of the pieces of the law, of what will soon be law. Coincidentally, the South Hadley School District Task Force released their anti-bullying policy yesterday, and as I had sent in the email, I found it, I was pretty pleased that our work was very similar to theirs. Some of the school committee members had proposed changes. I have incorporated them in to this draft, April 28th draft of the policy, including a section that specifically states that the superintendent will develop guidelines and procedures for implementation of the policy, and published in student handbooks.
I would just like to say one thing. The, at the last meeting, we were trying to, we were going through the procedure, and so that the new people know, I was mistaken, and for Mr. Marchese, who had wanted to change, make a change, I should have said that he should put it in a motion. You could either send it to the subcommittee, send it to the superintendent, and it goes back to the policy subcommittee to be worked on. So normally what we do is we have two readings of something. So you get the first time, you get this draft the first time, and have a week to read it. And during that week, if you have any questions or comments or changes that you'd like, you get them to the superintendent so that they can be looked at and to see legally, she always checks with our legal counsel, Andy Waugh, and so she sees if they can be legally incorporated or if they work with what the policy subcommittee has done. And then she would make a change if it was needed and bring it to the next, to our next meeting for our second reading. But that's why we had instituted two readings of something. And so the other way that you can change something, which I didn't say, and I should have said, was you can make a motion at the meeting that night. You could have made a motion and said, I'd like to include this little section. So I apologize to Mr. Marchese that I forgot, in the conversation, it just got away from me, that that was a second way that you could do that, because we've always done the other way. But you can do that. So if we looked at this tonight, it's not the ideal thing, and it's not what, you know, you'd be really looking for. It kind of disrupts the procedure, but it could be done. So if tonight we saw this and it was something that somebody wanted to insert, because our last readings for next, the next meeting, and we would vote on it at the next meeting, you could make a motion, and if you get a second and you get the majority of the people, then that person, that motion would work into the policy. Do I understand what I'm saying? Do you get that?
My only comment that says in our own policy, meaning the policy for new policy, is that it's developed by the subcommittee, and then it comes for a first reading, and then discussion for any changes at that first reading.
Exactly.
So, but in, nowhere in that policy does it say there's any exchange between school committee members or the superintendent in the interim. Maybe we need to update the policy to include that.
That's a good point, because that's how we've always done it. And you're right, it's not in there.
Yeah, it's not in there.
You're right, it's not in there.
So the policy states that it comes to a first reading, and discussion debated at the first reading, then for changes, to go back to the subcommittee for changes, and then back to the school committee for ratification.
Well, we're going to start, I think one of the problems was that Mr. Vale's not here, and Mrs. Duffy's no longer here, and this, we're caught in the middle of that change right now. So that's, that's a good suggestion. When the new policy subcommittee meets, we can have them look at that and make it more to clarify it. Okay, sounds good. Okay, so does anyone have, we did have a lot of comment and questioning, which was excellent. I think we've got a really strong policy. Mrs. Benton.
I think because this is a policy that really involves the entire community, I'm making a recommendation that it be put up on our website tomorrow, and that we get correct, encourage community members to respond if they have concerns or suggested questions on. This is...
Put it up as the draft.
Yeah, just as it is, unless it is a draft and solicit input from the community. This is, I did not have a chance to read through the entire law. I believe that we are in sync with the law, but I can't say 100% because I didn't have a chance to do that, so there might need to be more changes. But I think it's important to get the, make the community aware of this policy, that we're serious about bullying, including cyberbullying in the schools, and we're not going to allow it to affect students and staff.
One of the very first things I see here is that they're going to set apart the Fourth Wednesday in January as No Name Calling Day. This is incre, this is going to be incredible to read this bill.
There's going to be curriculum and a stance and everything, and training for teachers and parents, and it, the bill is very, very good. It's very good.
Except unfortunately, it does not have any funding to go with it. And that's the unfortunate, and I, and I'm not, I say that seriously, because to do professional development, it costs money, and there's no funding. I talked to the State House tonight, because that was my question, is there funding that's going to go along with this?
Right. Any more questions or comments? Does everyone agree that the superintendent should put this, post this? And would we do it for the two weeks and plan to vote on this, or put it off two more weeks?
It's up to the pleasure of the school committee.
What do we feel? We'll have a third reading in two weeks and see if there's any changes. How's that? If anyone gave us suggestions? If there aren't, then we could vote it, and if there are, then we could discuss it and vote it two weeks from then. How's that sound? Does that sound good?
Yeah, wait for the comments.
Wait for the comments, yeah.
And make sure it is ratified, because it still has to go through the rest of the legislature at the State.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
This is saying, they're saying tomorrow it's going to happen, yeah.
Mr. Marchese.
Just correct me if I'm wrong, though. Ms. Higgins, in your statement that being ratified by the legislative, we can still go forward whether or not it got ratified and still issue a policy, whether or not it got ratified.
Yeah, no, right, yeah. We could, absolutely, but in case, sorry, and my thinking is, in case something happens at the State House that would drastically affect what we already have, then we would, you know, I know we can vote on it as many times and ratify it as many times as we want, but it would be, just in the sense of keeping it open to the townsfolk, the townsfolk are going to have a chance to comment on it, and I'd like to, you know, hear what they have to say as well.
The current bill that came out of Conference Committee is not subject to amendment. It's an up and down vote by the Senate and the House, so there's no more amendments, there's no more changes. So if they vote yea, it goes. If it votes nay, then it's out. And I believe we can still go forward, though, with our policy, though. So what you see here, if it's enacted, this is what it's going to be, which is going to be great.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Mrs. Carroll.
I will put the district one.
Not the different school ones?
I will also put it on the different school ones as well.
Yeah, that was good. Thank you. Excellent. That's great. Thank you. So we hope people will read that on the website. That would be terrific. And if you have any questions or comments, you can email them to the superintendent. That would be good. Okay. New business, last day of school?
Although I was a little concerned last night when I heard the forecast for today, I am going to go forward and recommend that the last day of school for students and staff be June 16th with a half day for students and a full day for staff.
Excellent. How will lunches be served?
Lunches will not be served.
Will not be served. None of the schools.
No.
Okay.
Glad you clarified, asked that question.
Okay, now could we, Mr. Marchese?
I was just, are we asking for a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. I'd entertain a motion to, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'd entertain a motion that June 16th be listed as the last day of school for the year 2010.
I'd like to make a motion to have June 16th designated as the last day of the school year for 2010.
Do you have a second? Second, Dr. Quick? Any other comments or questions? I think it's a great idea that there's a half day for students on that last day. It's long overdue. I think we did it last year, too. It makes perfect sense. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, Trish?
Thank you.
Put this back, put this back. Okay. Student activity accounts. Mrs. Benton.
Please call Mr. Aggero, who will present the latest report on student activity, and he has a request for our transfer of funds.
Okay, Mr. Aggero.
Thank you. In front of you, you have a copy of the balance sheets for each of the school's student activity accounts as of March 31st, 2010. You'll note that the high school student activity account has a balance of $80,251. However, $49,417 of the balance is related to the classes of 2010 through 2013, leaving a balance of $30,834. And on the report, it shows the detail of how that money is broken up into the various student activity line items. In the middle school, there is a balance of $85,230. $57,057 of that balance is related to the eighth grade field trip that's scheduled later on the school year, leaving a balance of about $28,172. And it's going through the student activity accounts. I do have a recommendation from the high school principal. There are two student activity line items that have been inactive for a couple of years. The first one is line 1610, science fairs. There's an amount of $296.49 on that line. The high school principal recommends transferring the balance from that science fair account to a science club account, which is account 4006. He also has a second request. There's a yellow ribbon club with a balance of $377.27. This account was set up during 9/11. The high school principal recommends donating the funds to the town's Veterans Affairs for their continued efforts with donations to veterans in Iraq and Afghanistan. I just received these recommendations from the principal right before I came over here, so I don't have copies, but, so those are the two recommendations the high school principal has.
Wow, that's generous. Thank you. Okay, I think I got it. I would take, yes.
It has always been the policy of the school committee not to vote on financial matters at the two readings, so I just wanted them to do the reading tonight so that you can vote it at the, on May 12th.
Okay, great.
Unless there was an urgency, and since, maybe Robert could tell us how long the yellow club has been, money has been sitting there. I think it can wait two weeks.
Right. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Do you remember that?
Does anyone have any questions? All right, so we'll come back in two weeks with these two transfers, a transfer and a donation. Excellent. Okay. Our next item of business is the school committee, subcommittees. If someone's already on a subcommittee and they wish to remain, definitely they could listen. No, I only heard from one person, so I don't know if, if you want to just to let me know, or you want to say tonight, if people are ready tonight to say that they'd like to be considered for a subcommittee. I'd like to do it. Dr. Quick?
I'd like to remain on the school health advisory committee and the Education, Wilmington Education Foundation Board.
Right, is anyone else also on subcommittee would like to remain? Mr. Marchese?
I believe I was pointing to the school committee representative, the master plan committee, and if so, I'd like to stay on that. We haven't done anything, but seldom do.
How did Mr. Higgins get by with that?
He took it last week.
I know, I'm teasing.
Yeah. He got to me like...
Yeah, that's great.
I was on for two years, and I had no meetings.
We haven't had any, so.
So good luck.
Good. That's excellent, because then we don't have to send a letter to the town manager to change the person. I'm sure he'll be glad. Doesn't have to come up. Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Sure. Big shoes to fill, but I'd be interested in the policy subcommittee, Mrs. Duffy's old seat, and depending on what Mr. Vale wants to do, I'd also be interested in the technology task force.
You know what? We could have two people at that, to that anyway, so you definitely can have that.
Great.
Great. You'll enjoy that.
Mr. Hayes. And Mr. Hayes. Okay. I don't know if you might not like, if you want to do a subcommittee. We haven't had any at all this year, but the sick bank subcommittee, does that, would that be?
I don't think she can do that one, because she's an employee.
Yeah. I have to find out, yeah, we have to, I have to get a list of what you can do.
I don't think I can.
Oh, okay. Oh, so are there any?
Let me find out, okay.
Yes, because I'm not sure.
Go ahead. I was going to say the CPAC? Yeah, I was going to, for that one.
What is it?
Special Education PAC?
And I was going to tell you that the chairs of that CPAC, I've invited to the next meeting to talk about how they've re-regulated the committee and what they're up to.
Excellent. Can we check on that?
If that's okay.
Tentatively, yes. We'll put you on that, which is, just check.
Okay. Thank you.
That's like me with my daughter. We have to, we have to clarify what we, what we can do and what we can't. Yeah, okay.
So hopefully they're going to be able to come to the May 12th meeting.
Oh, that would be great.
And just give a little overview.
Okay. I'd be really interested in the strategic plan advisory committee. Is anyone else interested in the policy subcommittee? Because definitely I would do that if no one else is. We need two people.
We have to wait for coincidence.
We'll wait, we'll ask Mr., yeah. So these are for tonight, but we also need a second person on, I will do it, the superintendent's contract negotiation we need. As soon as we get a committee going. Are you available?
I'm actually, I'm going to miss the May 12th meeting. I'm gone a week.
Oh, okay. But it could happen before then, right? Oh, okay.
I'll be around next week, but not the week after.
That's only, we have till June 30th?
Yeah, we have till June 30th. So you want to do it?
Yeah, I want to probably be on it for now.
Okay, you and I'll do it.
Yeah, if something changes, I'll have to let you know.
I'll do that one, okay. And Mr. Vale can stay on technology if he chooses, and then we'll see if he's available for the others. And for now, if something happens on the sick bank, I'll be there. I'll have to put myself on that for now. We'll keep our fingers crossed no one gets sick and needs to use the sick bank, so that would be good. Okay, I think that's all of them. Is everybody happy? Is that good? Thank you. All right. You know what else I found in our policy? The subcommittee chairperson and its members, normally if there's two people, the person who's got the most seniority is the chairperson. If there's one person, you're the chairperson. So...
My own chair.
So you're a chairperson, Harrell.
She has no meeting, the chair, no meetings.
And it also says that the committee chairperson and superintendent will be ex-official members of all special subcommittees. So that's something I, it's good to read our policy. Working on that. Didn't, wasn't aware of. Okay. Delegations. Not tonight. No delegation. Okay. Let me see. Board members' questions and comments? We will start tonight. If tonight you're not prepared, because I think you're on first, and I, I don't want to start with the new people, that wouldn't be fair.
No, actually, I should just say, I appreciate them coming out to talk about the World Challenge, and it makes me wish I was back in high school, and I wish I could, had those opportunities. I spent one week in England, and I felt like a world traveler back then, so I, you know, it's, I always, it could be a little scary for the parents, but having, you know, myself, but having, you know, myself, my brother, my brother and my sister who have gone, my sister did a tip, same type of trip down to Ecuador, I believe it was. And it was just an experience of a lifetime. So I, you know, I just, I hope that it gets off the ground and they have a really great showing of kids.
And the Wilmington Educational Foundation has a message about town meeting.
Oh, and the Wilmington Education Foundation. My head is somewhere else this evening. My apologies. The Wilmington Education Foundation just really wants to tell everybody to please come out to the town meeting on May 1st. It begins at 10:30, I believe, in support of Article 10, which is, which regards the feasibility study, which is the next step. It is not a vote to approve or disapprove the high school. It is a vote to go to the next step on where we should go with the current situation we're in with the high school and where we go from here. So please come out and support the high school and support the children of Wilmington. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Marchese.
First and foremost, I want to welcome Kathleen and Robert and thank you for stepping up and joining the committee. And also congratulate Mrs. Kane on being reelected and being chair once again. So congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a good thank you. And also to all the other elected officials in town, congratulations on the election to Mike and Lou and Leonor and Bob Peterson. So it was, it was a good race. Also, I just want to say I'm very happy with our revised bullying policy. A lot of work went into it. I know there was a lot of debate on it. People are passionate about it, but we're here to help the children of Wilmington and that's why we're passionate, we're parents, we're involved in the community. And sometimes our passion overexhumes, you know, our bodies and comes out. But it's, it's because we do this for the children. So with that, I'm very happy with what we've done. I'm happy with the legislature and that it's finally come out of committee with a positive recommendation. And I hope it does get passed tomorrow through the House and the Senate. So if anybody has any questions or anything, please contact your local state legislature or contact any of the people on the committee or write a letter, such as I did, because it's definitely worth it. It's a great bill. And also, just to the, again, my monthly reminder to the seniors, we're getting closer so to the class of 2010. I hope you had a great year. We're almost there. We're all proud of you. And just remember, you are our future and we look forward to great things to come. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marchese. Mr. Higgins?
Pretty simply, welcome to new members. Again, thank you for stepping up. That's great. And good luck over the next three years. That's about it. Town meeting Saturday morning, 10:30. Please be on time so we can get the quorum going and get the meeting underway and moving along. Thank you.
Mrs. Benton?
I just, I know some, there had been some question as to whether Article 10 was going to be taken in order or will be in the lottery. I had found out this evening that it will be taken in order of the financial article. So it'll come up pretty quickly.
Great. So get there early then because it'll happen early.
That'll be excellent. Okay. Mr. Hayes?
Well, I'm going to keep it brief tonight. I just wanted to thank the voters of Wilmington to, for electing me. It's, it's nice to come in last place and still win. So that's great. And I look forward to three more years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mrs. Carroll?
Same here. Thank you voters very much and I'm looking forward for the next three years.
Okay. I just wanted to share one thing that came in my MTA Today booklet because I always try and tell the people Massachusetts students are number one again. And we have found out that we've been ranked first in the country yet again on a national reading exam. The state's fourth and eighth graders received the highest scores in the National Assessment of Educational Progress Reading Exam in 2009, marking the third time in a row that the state's students outscored their peers nationwide. Also, the grade eight Massachusetts students, the highest average for math. They rank first in the country in the NAEP math tests in grades four and eight. That was released last October. I think we need to be reminded that our standards have started out on the higher end and almost we're paying for that in a way, like with the RTT, that will be coming up again. But we're doing a great job. Our teachers are doing a great job. And because they're doing a great job, I just think it's not, it's not stated enough. And we're always looking like, why can't our schools get better, adequate yearly progress, et cetera? And you want to say to the people, come on here. We're the best in the nation in reading and in math in grades three, four, eight. So I just wanted to add that. I wanted to just to, a couple of things of procedure for the new people so you'll know. Prior to any financial report coming up, we're going to be holding a workshop that everyone else is welcome to come to, but it'll say on the top, you know, that we will meet like at 6:15 instead of, or at 6:30 so that we can go over, Mr. Aggero will go over how we read the reports and we'll all be on the same line there for that. I wanted to let you know that as far as your packet is concerned, that technically the superintendent has until Friday to get the packets out. But Mrs. Benton, since she started, has been really generous with her time and worked hard to get the packets out on a Wednesday, but they're not due till Friday. So every time we get them on a Wednesday, I'm like, thank you, Mrs. Benton. Gives us the extra time. But occasionally, something, a report has to be finished or information has to come that she has to wait and so that we get it on Friday. I think that's only happened once since she's been here. So I just wanted you to be clear so we'd know about that. And the, oh, the other thing I just wanted to mention that if the two new members would like to have a tour of the schools so that you'd be aware of what's happening in the schools, you go through the superintendent's office and Mrs. Benton will arrange that for you. And you'd get to meet the principals and have them, they would show you around their schools. But we never, ever, on our own, call the principals as school committee members. We don't call the principals. We don't call them at school. We don't call them at home. That's not what we're supposed to do. We are the overseers, but we're not the micromanagers and we don't go in. And you, one thing I learned a couple of years ago is you're always seen now by the school staff as a school committee person. You could be a Nana sometimes, but you're, you're seen as a school committee person. So we have to conduct ourselves in such a way that we always come through the superintendent's office. Okay? So, and the other thing that Mrs. Benton had said, I am arranging for Mike Gilbert to come and give us a workshop on what it means to be a school committee member. And we'll just do it an hour before a meeting. I've given him some dates and we'll just do it an hour before a meeting and have like a supper workshop and go over some, like, kind of rules of the road, things like that. Okay? And then charting the course is by law. I'll explain it to you afterwards about that. But school committee members within the first year are supposed to try to get to this training, charting the course. So what Mike will give us will be a little bit of that, but more directed to us and how we run things in Wilmington, how our processes go. So that's, that's it. Other reports? We want to get to correspondence because I think there might be some tonight.
We actually do have some. Lovely little card from Judy O'Connell. Dear members of the Wilmington School Committee, just a quick note to say thank you very much for the generous gifts presented to me at my last school committee meeting. Also, I appreciate the kind words and best wishes received from each of you. I enjoyed, I enjoyed serving on the committee over the past three years. I wish you all the very best in all your future endeavors. Once again, thank you sincerely, Judy O'Connell.
That was lovely. Thank you. Okay, our future meeting dates and agenda items. Hopefully, we will all be together on this coming Saturday at town meeting, 10:30. We sit together towards the front of the side aisle on the right-hand side during the part in case there are any questions or anything we need to talk about. And, yes.
Get the budgets.
Bring it.
Have you sent them, given them budgets, Paul? Okay, we will get those to you.
Get those to you. Okay, great. And then our next meeting will be May 12th, 2010. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Higgins?
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second? Mr. Marchese? All those in favor? Unanimous, Trish? Thank you. Please attend town meeting.